Good evening and welcome to the October 12th meeting of the Aiken City Council. We're going to call it to order this time and we're going to open with an invocation, which will be followed by the pledge. Father, we're thankful for this opportunity to come together to tend to the business of the people. We ask that your blessings would be upon this council. We ask for wisdom. We ask, Lord, that you would help us be sensitive to the needs to make our city what we would like her to be. Father, we ask that everything that would be said and done here would bring, be pleasing to you and that in all we do, may we all remember that we represent you. As in your name we ask it. Amen. And I'd like to ask Chief, if you would, to come up at this time. Chief Branko, good evening.
Good evening, sir. Counsel.
Good evening, Chief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir. We'd like to go over the guidelines for our city council meetings. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional quorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is expected. During public hearings, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, please raise your hands and I will certainly recognize you. Please approach the podium and for our record, if you would, please state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. And I thank everyone for following our guidelines and making sure that the business that we conduct is in a manner that represents our city. With that, I'd like to recognize our Mayor Pro Tim, Councilwoman Lissy Price, for additions and deletions to the agenda. Good evening, Councilwoman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to our... I'm throwing off you all because my husband's sitting in the audience and I don't know why he's here.[792.70][792.70](Laughter). But welcome to, welcome to all of you. I don't know why.[799.38][799.38](Laughter).
All of you except for him.
He hasn't attended, he hasn't attended four meetings since I've been on council. So something's wrong.[807.22][807.22](Laughter). But welcome to all of our visitors and, Mr. Mayor, there are no additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, so the motion is for us to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Broll. All those in favor of accepting the agenda as presented, please raise your hand and that's unanimous. Thank you. The minutes were distributed to council members before our meeting for their review. With that, is there at this time a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I shall move.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Is there a second?
Second.[849.79][849.79](Laughter).
Don't fight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. It's harder to tell who makes it with masks on, I'll be honest.[859.23][859.23](Laughter). Yeah, and they point at each other. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please raise your hand and that's unanimous. Thank you. We move down to presentations and at this time I'm going to recognize Councilwoman Diggs for presentations.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I was contacted a few weeks ago by Eva Finney Jackson and told that someone had been at an event at the Lissy B. Price Center and I think he and his wife had catered the event, and y'all hear more about the event later, but he is an artist and that he had done a painting for the Lissy B. Price Center because he felt like there's this building with Lissy B. Price name on it and usually you see the, the person who the building is named after, you usually see a photograph somewhere in the building of that person. So he took it upon himself to do a portrait of Lissy B. Price and he, and it is to be hung in the Lissy B. Price Center unless she fights y'all and want to take it home.[955.29][955.29](Laughter). So he is going to come forward and present it. Did I get something wrong? He is going to come forward and present it.
Oh, how nice.
And he also has Lirana Hughes, who y'all know that. Lirana is the farm-to-table caterer.
Can we have Lissy come closer? We're going to stay our safe distance.
Okay.[988.23][988.23](Laughter).
Wow.[990.23][990.23](Applause).
Okay. Well, Ms. Price, when, when, when I was over there, first of all, thank you for allowing me to be here and I thank the artists of Art and Soul, Lirana Hughes, and I thank, just thank God for being here for all that's going on now. This is my wife, Jackie, Jackie Atkins. I got to acknowledge her because that's why I'm half as good as I am now. But when we got the chance to go into the Lissy B. Price Center and I was looking around at the building and I noticed there wasn't a picture of the person, so I started doing a little research, asking around, and you know, where I'm from, the way you know if somebody is really worth a thought, as they say, is when you mention their name, they mention the forename.[1063.74][1063.74](Laughter). Or they mention, mention front of the name. So I started asking around, you know, well, who is she? Oh, you don't know Lissy B. Price?[1073.24][1073.24](Laughter). I asked her, oh, you talking about Ms. Price? Okay. And it went on and on like that. So as I got ready to do my research, I looked it up and I said, wow. And so after I did all my research and everything, that's the process I go through, then I started looking at the pictures. And when I start, when I pulled the picture up, you know, to be an artist, you can, you can build a picture of a person and they can be a beautiful person, but when the beauty of that person shines from the inside out.
Right.
Then you have a task on your hands.[1113.08][1113.08](Laughter). When I looked at the picture, I saw, why couldn't she just, you know, just kind of look like, yeah, I took the picture.[1123.13][1123.13](Laughter). But when you look at the smile and the eyes, you see the sincerity in this lady. And, and as I looked it up, I seen all the things that she had done and the person that she has been in the community. So thinking back on that, looking at the building, I just figured that, that building ain't nothing, the person is still alive, man, that's, 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 that's an honor. Just like it's an honor for me to be in that building. So I don't have a lot that God gave me, but he gave me the ability to, to draw in the paint. And I try to use it every day to give honor to him, so when I see there wasn't a picture in there, I say, I hope she accepts it.
I want to see it.
And I just want to, because I think she was a...[1168.13][1168.13](Applause).
If you'll let me finish giving the background behind this and what this is, what we hope to do with this.
That's amazing.
Oh, Lissy, that is beautiful. Beautiful Lissy.
This gift is a gift to you personally and what we have asked, Robert Atkins is on display at the Lissy Bryce Price Center, his art is there on display, and we'd like your permission to hang this until the end of the year with the display he has, but this has been gifted to you. If you'd like to loan it to the city to place it in that way or use it in some other way, we'd like for you to do that. But I'd also like to talk about the piece behind this in just one minute. This was someone that came and participated in what we were doing in work with the city to work towards sustainable community solutions. And part of what we talk about so much, unless you have an example of what that looks like in practice, it's just stuff we say that sounds good. This was someone that saw a need, a need that he felt needed to be addressed. He didn't ask for permission, he didn't go ask for resources, he said, this is a need that I am able to meet. Whether they need it or not, this is something that I see is important, to have the likeness of this person, so that someone sees this and says, this is a person just like me, maybe I could do some of those things like Lissy. And this is what we want. And so, Gail, thank you for supporting us in coordinating this gift, to be able to support artists. He's an artist at Art and Soul, their tagline says, "Art meets spirituality." These are people who say their purpose is to create messages through their art and these are people that have come into our community. They do not live in the city limits of Aiken, but said, there's a need in this community and we can meet that need and we're going to do it. Thank you for coordinating and giving us an opportunity to explain the pieces of what sustainable community looks like. It looks like people finding a need and then doing it. So thank you for the work that you do to give us a reason to be able to bring this today. Thank you.
Thank you.[1302.92][1302.92](Applause).
(Inaudible).
That's so good.
It's supposed to be a surprise.
It's beautiful.[1307.92][1307.92](Laughter).
Thank you.[1309.92][1309.92](Applause). Beautiful job. Beautiful.
It is. It's such a great, great thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Tim, we can, he can go home now.[1317.92][1317.92](Laughter). I think he is.
You know, men.
Thank you all for coming with us. Well, we're all of you all invited.[1322.92][1322.92](Laughter). I, I am truly humbled, humbled with the Atkins family for doing this, this portrait. Gail?
She sneaked on you, didn't she?
There's always a plan.[1327.92][1327.92](Laughter). Or something going on. This center opened in April of 20, April 2019 and it's been almost 18 months and we watched the attendance, the participation activity grow tremendously. People are appreciating having that facility and that location, but we've also seen people not only use it within the community, but they're traveling across state lines to use the facility. So I am so thankful and grateful to the council that I sit on, the mayor, and other council members for honoring me in this way. I am totally humbled. The last time you all did this, I was so speechless, William Price was going to go and say, I knew something got to be said.[1339.92][1339.92](Laughter). I was speechless, I could not, I could not even make a motion, uh, second motion in the time. And we had a council member that said that that's what it takes to shut her off.[1343.92][1343.92](Laughter). So thank you all for letting me serve with you, but thank you to the Atkins family and y'all for, for what you've done. This is a nice, nice welcome surprise that I humbled, sent to you.[1347.92][1347.92](Applause).
All right. Where'd you get the photo?
Off the land. Magic. They're not going to tell.
Very good. That was a special presentation, as it's listed, so.
Wow. Gorgeous.
Well deserved.
All righty, we're going to try to follow that up if we can with old business.[1359.92][1359.92](Laughter). And our first item is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. And I'm going to ask, Councilwoman Broll pointed something out earlier, and before we take a motion, would you mind asking and pointing that question out on our record?
I know that Councilwoman Diggs was reappointing her person, John Owen, to the General Aviation Commission, but then the backup pages to that is for Mr. Jerome Ferguson for the Building Code Board of Appeals. So I don't know if we, I'm not sure, I can't get this to jive.[1368.92][1368.92](Laughter). Maybe, maybe it was one going ahead or...
This is the man you said before, John Owen, right?
That was for the General Aviation Commission. Jerome Ferguson is for the Building Code Board of Appeals.
Right. But we didn't, but we didn't have a thing on that. Did you do it before?
He's, he's already on the board.
So you were appointing him too?
Reappointing.
But it just didn't get in the...
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. So both of those gentlemen are going to be reappointed?
No. Jerome is new for the Board of Appeals. He's actually replacing...
Tim Redd, he's replacing.
Right. Timothy Redd. That was...
That's a reappointment and this is a new appointment?
That's a new appointment.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you for that point of clarification. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I couldn't get it to jive.
With that, I will recognize our city manager. Good evening, Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have the reappointment of John Owen to the commission for a term that would expire September 1st, '22, and the appointment of Jerome Ferguson to Building Code Appeal. This is Councilwoman Diggs's appointment as well, but it is a new appointment.
Yes. And I have another new appointment, Tiffany Palmer of the Arts Commission.
We'll take that after we vote.
Do we have to vote on your person?
Go get that. All right. So we have two appointments to consider tonight. Is there a motion to accept these appointments?
No.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Broll. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Jerido. All those in favor of these appointments, please raise your hand and that's unanimous. Thank you. At this time, we will take names to be considered at our next public meeting, so Councilwoman Diggs, if you'd like.
Yes, I'd like to appoint Tiffany Palmer to the Arts Commission.
Very good. Any other nominations to be considered at our next meeting? All right. Thank you. Moving down old business, this is second reading of public hearing for an ordinance to amend the concept plan for the Village at Woodside for the relocation of multifamily apartments by title and ordinance amending the concept plan for the property located in the Village at Woodside. Is there a motion?
There's a move.
Thank you, Councilman Jerido. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Price.
Thank you. This is a concept plan amendment since this, with the concept plan, there have been several amendments to the plan. The 2005 concept plan addresses about 299 residential dwelling units with about a plus or minus 136 of those being designated as multifamily villas. And there was an amendment in 2014 to expand the assisted living facility and convert, and the conversion of some multifamily villas near the gate with multiple office buildings. But that plan continued to show that amount of residential dwelling units and multifamily and villas. And again, there was another amendment in 2017 to reflect the final size of the assisted living facility amenities added to the green spaces and showing additional single-family development on the south side of the property. And it also was adjusted to reflect the actual development with total residential units being 100, 318 with a plus or minus 114 designated as multifamily villas, apartments, or residential over retail. And then there was an amendment in 2019 to allow maintenance facility to be constructed near the gate with the residential unit mix staying unchanged from the 2017 plan. Um...
Very good. That was a special presentation, as it's listed, so.
Wow.
Gorgeous.
All righty, we're going to try to follow that up if we can with old business. And our first item is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. And I'm going to ask, Councilwoman Broll pointed something out earlier, and before we take a motion, would you mind asking and pointing that question out on our record?
I know that Councilwoman Diggs was reappointing her person, John Owen, to the General Aviation Commission, but then the backup pages to that is for Mr. Jerome Ferguson for the Building Code Board of Appeals. So I don't know if we, I'm not sure, I can't get this to jive. Maybe, maybe it was one going ahead, or, um, this is the man you said before, John Owen, right?
That was for the General Aviation Commission. Jerome Ferguson is for the Building Code Board of Appeals.
Right. But we didn't have a thing on that. Did you do it before?
He's, he's already on the board.
So you were reappointing him too?
Reappointing.
But it just didn't get in the?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. So both of those gentlemen are going to be reappointed?
No. Jerome is new for the Board of Appeals. He's actually replacing.
Tim Redd, he's replacing.
Right, Timothy Redd. That was.
That's a reappointment, and this is a new appointment?
That's a new appointment.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you for that point of clarification. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I couldn't get it to jive.
With that, I will recognize our city manager. Good evening, Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have the reappointment of John Owen to the commission for a term that would expire September 1st, '22, and the appointment of Jerome Ferguson to Building Code Appeal. This is Councilwoman Diggs's appointment as well, but it is a new appointment.
Yes, and I have another new appointment, Tiffany Palmer of the Arts Commission.
We'll take that after we vote.
Do we have to vote on your person?
Go get that. All right, so we have two appointments to consider tonight. Is there a motion to accept these appointments? Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Broll. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Gerardo. All those in favor of these appointments, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. At this time, we will take names to be considered at our next public meeting. So Councilwoman Diggs, if you'd like?
Yes, I'd like to appoint Tiffany Palmer to the Arts Commission.
Very good. Any other nominations to be considered at our next meeting? All right, thank you. Moving down old business, this is second reading of public hearing for an ordinance to amend the concept plan for the Village at Woodside for the relocation of multifamily apartments by title and ordinance amending the concept plan for the property located in the Village at Woodside. Is there a motion?
There's a move.
Thank you, Councilman Gerardo. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Price. Comments from staff?
Thank you. This is a concept plan amendment since this, uh, this, uh, with the concept plan, there have been several amendments to the plan. The 2005 concept plan addresses about 299 residential dwelling units, with about a plus or minus 136 of those being designated as multifamily villas. And there was an amendment in 2014 to expand the assisted living facility and convert, and the conversion of some multifamily villas near the gate with multiple office buildings. But that plan continued to show that amount of residential dwelling units and multifamily and villas. And again, there was another amendment in 2017 to reflect the final size of the assisted living facility amenities added to the green spaces and showing additional single-family development on the south side of the property. And it also was adjusted to reflect the actual development with total residential units being 100, 318, with a plus or minus 114 designated as multifamily villas, apartments, or residential over retail. And then there was an amendment in 2019 to allow maintenance facility to be constructed near the gate, with the residential unit mix staying unchanged from the 2017 plan. The developer now wishes to construct plus or minus 98 apartments in a location that was once designated residential over office slash retail. And since this is a zone plan residential, a concept plan for review must be sent to the Planning Commission and with a recommendation sent to City Council. And then council has two readings to consider the amendment to the plan. We read over the conditions that were unanimously recommended to City Council as part of their unanimous recommendation for this project at their September 15 meeting. Council heard this at first reading on September 28th, and is before you for second, for consideration for second reading tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Beedenbow. This time we'll open up comments from the audience. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi.
I see you voted twice.
Do that? I only voted once. My name is Diane Beatty. I'm a resident at the Village of Woodside, and my address is 206 Gatepost Lane. I'd like to thank all of you for being here tonight and taking into consideration our concerns with the proposed 98-unit apartment complex. I would like to ask that at this time, the council please consider tabling the proposed concept plan change brought forth by the developer. I'm not asking to have it rejected, because I understand that it is coming. And with that being said, moving it to the front of the neighborhood, near the entrance, is probably the best place for it. However, I feel that before any more concept chan, concept plan changes are approved, the developer should first finish some of the plans that were proposed to the residents when they were investing in his vision and purchasing their homes. Or at a minimum, provide the city council and the village residents with dates that they will complete what has already been proposed. I ask, as your constituent, that the council hold the developer accountable for finishing these plans before moving forward with any new changes in plans. The development team keeps referring to the original concept plan when talking about the apartments. I'd like to talk about that plan as well. On that original plan, they were presented, that we were presented with and sold on, they had proposed 26 townhomes to be, to be built on three parcels of land. It's the front of the neighborhood, where the homes are. At this time, they had built a total of 12, six on the Parkview West parcel and six on the Courtyard parcel, leaving large unfinished open spaces on each end of the land. The third parcel was changed to be single-family homes. At the last city council meeting while discussing the building of the apartments, Mr. Baldwin stated that, quote, "The building of multifamily units is vital to the long-term success and sustainability of the village," end quote. I understand that, and I agree with what he is saying. But I believe they should start by finishing the already proposed and half-built multifamily unit townhomes. I'm not sure why they never finished building the rest of the townhomes that they proposed, or even if they are planning to finish them. Perhaps they weren't selling as well as they had planned, or maybe they just weren't economically viable. It seems to be the case with some of the other proposed components on the original concept plan that we invested in. On the original concept plan, they talk about a future Village Inn, a future specialty market, and future Village Shops. It's been 15 years since that concept plan. Where are they? We currently have one retail shop, and it's a specialized bike store. So if you're in the market for a $3,000 electric bike, the Village at Woodside is where you want to shop. We have three restaurants, two that are open for lunch, two that are open for dinner. The concept plan that we were given shows the commercial and professional offices to be located at the front of the neighborhood. Instead, through yet another concept plan change approved by the city council in 2014, they were able to build a 75-unit assisted living center and move the commercial and professional offices back into the village. Again, instead of adding more retail or restaurants, they have filled in much of that section they labeled as future Village Shops with more professional offices. I'd like to add that we purchased our lot in 2016. Yet we were given this original concept plan with no mention of the changes that were made in 2014. Sorry.
Hold it up, Diane.
This was, I gave everybody a handout. This is 2016.
All right.
My neighbors bought their home site in 2018 and were given a different brochure with an updated concept plan. It still lists the grocery store in the Village Inn as components of the plan, but no mention of the apartments anywhere in the village. I think we can all agree there has been a disconnect when it comes to communication from the development team. I asked at the last meeting that city council please recommend to the developer that the development team meet with all of the residents to discuss the facts and give us a chance to voice our thoughts and opinions on this plan before any decisions were made. Councilman Gerardo said, quote, "His hope would be that the developers and homeowners could get together and communicate." We haven't heard anything since that meeting, but in fairness, I did just speak with Kent Baldwin and Diana Peters out in the hallway before this meeting. They have agreed to meet with all of us and said they were planning to reach out to us. So that's one issue potentially resolved. In closing, I'd like to say that so many of the concept plan components that we were told about and invested in when we purchased our home site have never been realized. The developer is asking us to trust that they will do a great job with these apartments, but that's a very difficult ask at this time. There is just too much left on the table that hasn't been completed for us to believe that starting yet another project at this time is a good idea. That is why I'm asking you to please hear our voices and concerns, and please table this proposed change this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. Good evening, Ms. Abney.
Hello.
Any other comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jenny Hart, and I live at 268 Coach Lightway in the Village. My reason for being here tonight is to talk about traffic. The intersection of Silver Bluff, Silver Bluff Road and Village Green is very dangerous. And over several years, we've had maybe five traffic accidents and maybe two deaths at that intersection. Village Green Boulevard is the main entrance into the village, with one road into the village and one road exiting the village. Both streets are narrow, with a planted median between both lanes. There is also parking spaces on Village Green. Several years ago, the developer added speed bumps to Village Green to help decrease speeding. At the intersection of Coach Lightway and High Society, the City of Aiken Public Safety erected four-way stop signs to control speeding there. As mentioned in a letter to the Planning Commission, several residents have encountered vehicles traveling and driving in the wrong direction on Village Green. Many other streets in our village are also one-way streets. The addition of more retail shops and a grocery store will greatly add to the number of vehicles entering and exiting the village. Before deciding to approve the number of apartments planned for the village, please consider having another traffic study for Silver Bluff Road, and please think about reducing the size of the apartments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Appreciate you being with us.
My name is Faith Loeb. I'm at 306 Gatepost Lane in the Village of Woodside. I have a few comments to sort of recap what has already been said. Over the past few weeks, meeting with, being at the council, meeting with the council members and the mayor, I have come to realize that there is a legitimate need for rent, for quality rental units in Aiken. I have, with much pleasure, lived in the Village of Woodside since 2014 and been thrilled with the village concept, its ambiance and its cohesiveness. Here are my continued concerns. Although the concept plan was approved by the City of Aiken in 2005, and there were revisions since then, these revisions and the concept plan was not really disclosed as people bought into the village and to the concept. Most of us were all aware of the potential inn, which we would welcome, a potential grocery store, and potential apartments over retail. Those were always mentioned as potentials. However, the concept of 98-unit complex, apartment complex, is quite different than the potential of an inn and a grocery store and some, a retail. Additionally, I also have concerns about the increased, increased traffic, not so much on Silver Bluff, but in the village, as people come into the village, if there is a grocery store, going into the grocery store and going in and out of the grocery store and the apartment complex. I imagine this will create a lot of congestion, so I'd like to propose some thought about maybe widening the beginning of Silver Bluff, or creating an exit from the apartments and from the grocery store onto Silver Bluff, as they did in the Woodside community. They have a little excess ramp to go into Silver Bluff that doesn't create any additional Also, currently, the sightlines that we have crossing from one side to the other are poorly designed and very hard to see over the sightline, so it would be good to improve the sightline so we have to cross from one side to get into the grocery store, out of the grocery store, or the apartment complex.
Ms. Lo, I want to make sure I understand. Are you talking within, within the village, or are you talking about on Silver Bluff?
No, within the village.
Okay, okay.
On the, on the medians.
Okay.
There's only room for one car, and there is greenery and growth there, which is lovely. But if you don't, if you're not in a high SUV, you really can't see above it. And there's only one space for one car, so it really is a little treacherous at times to do, to get across. So if you're coming in from Silver Bluff and want to turn left into the grocery store, the apartments is going to create some congestion there and some problems seeing. I have mentioned that I have been very happy living in the village, and I think the developer has done an excellent job with the village concept. I propose that the developer reconsider a 98-unit complex and do a, perhaps a 48-unit complex, and that the architecture is on a Charleston and Savannah vibe that could be folded nicely into the village community, thus maintaining a sense of pride and safety and ultimately enriching the restaurants and the other businesses that are there. And this would enhance the village concept that we all bought into and loved. The other thing I don't think that was mentioned this evening is sufficient parking. I, I want to make sure that there are two-car parking for people that are two-car families, plus additional guest parking. This would enhance and ensure that this would be an upscale complex. And that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Lo.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are there any other comments from the audience for consideration? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Kent Baldwin. I live at 621 Colleton Avenue here in Aiken.
Kent, good evening.
Good evening.
Can you answer that? She asked a question about the parking spots. Do you know that off the top, top of your head on?
Well, the, the, the city ordinance requires one and a half spots per dwelling unit. So that would be our minimum parking requirement. I mean, we are going to develop this and understand the market, and we want to, you know, build an apartment facility that's going to be sufficient in terms of leasing and marketing. So we'll look at the parking requirement, but that would be the absolute minimum, and the need for additional could depend on our bedroom mix, that sort of thing. But it's, it's an important aspect of the facility to us as well.
All right, I think Ms. Broll had a question also.
Mr. Mayor, may I? Mr. Baldwin, I think I read somewhere in here that, uh, that the parking plans were submitted, the number of parking spaces, in accordance with what the city requires. There is a certain amount, having been a planning commissioner, that are required for different types of housing. And you are having your parking line up with all the city requirements, and they were approved with the concept plan according to their standards. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that there would be enough parking. And the parking, as I understand also, will be behind the apartments to fit in with that, uh, what is it called, traditional neighborhood?
Right.
Where all of the houses, no matter what they are, whether they're single-family or they're commercial, are up next to the street, and the parking is hidden behind. Am I understanding?
That's correct. That's, that's the, one of the reasons this is the location we've chosen. It gives us the sufficient land area to put the parking behind the buildings, you know, obscure it from view from the general public, from the park amenities, and it also is large enough that we can put the amount of parking that, that we would need.
And the traffic that was mentioned, if I'm understanding that correctly, and I want you to make sure we all do, that the traffic to be generated for this was figured in when this very first came, like in 2005, you had already planned for these apartments. In fact, I think I read somewhere that originally it was 318 apartments, but because of the development of Benton House, it reduced it down to 225, and now you've reduced it even more. Is that correct?
Well, the first point, the parking study, the traffic study, not parking study, the traffic study was part of the original design and the concept plan approval back in 2001 and then 2005. So the, the residential, the, the number of units, both in the village and coming out of Woodside at the village gate, in addition to all the projected growth and, and other traffic impacts on Silver Bluff Road and other development growth around Silver Bluff, were factored into the DOT's design for the Silver Bluff and Village Green Boulevard intersection, and that traffic light was needed because of those, those traffic studies. But it has been inherent in the, the design and the calculations since a minimum of 2000.
So all of that traffic was taken into consideration when that light was upgraded and changed? Okay.
And we, we prefer this location because it's, it brings this component of the village up closer to the main intersection at Silver Bluff, as opposed to buried kind of deep back into the village where to get in and out of the facility, you would have to, you know, travel the internal road network that was in the village, you know, putting more traffic on the, the village street. So having this concentration of residents closer to the intersection, we just feel is a far better plan.
So the traffic would be, be the same amount of traffic? It would just go through the village and back into the interior section?
And, and you're, you're... And your second question, we have not changed the count. The original residential unit counts are basically the same. They have not increased from 2005, except for a jump from 299 to 318. I think that occurred in 2000, might have been 14.
Well, I mean...
That was with the assisted living facility. So they consumed a certain number of the residential units that were already approved, so we haven't added units in addition to that. That was all inherent in the original approved unit counts.
So in fact, it's been reduced to what you originally started with?
It's the same. The number has not gone up or gone down. So the unit counts have remained the same, the density is the same. We're not asking for any additional units at this point in time, just to define, you know, the location of these and what we think is a superior spot.
Someone at somewhere along the line mentioned something about, you know, the outside of these, you have an architectural review board, correct?
We do.
And what you have shown us is not set in stone, the things we saw at the previous meeting, so there's still, you're still tweaking those.
Oh, we have a ways to go. You know, that's an initial concept done by the architect that we've engaged that's done a lot of work for us. They did the Reserve Club expansion. They've done a lot of work in the southeast with this type of housing. So we're sensitive to architecture. You just have to drive through the village and look at it. It's probably, you know, one of the most important assets we feel we have is a good touch on the architectural look of these things, so that's an initial concept. We do realize we have a ways to go, but this is really more to get us into the right location for this facility, and, you know, there's work to do as far as the look and the architectural styling of these buildings.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yeah, sure. The idea of building it out beforehand, I would imagine, just take the grocery store, for instance, I know that we talk about having grocery stores all over the city. People want to have grocery stores, and this place too. I would imagine that as much as anything, it comes down to grocery stores, when we talk to grocery store developers, is that it comes down to households, how many rooftops, how many people are living there, and that this should, at least from my experience in real estate, perpetuate the idea of the grocery store actually coming. So it's sort of the chicken and the egg. You can't have one without the other and that process.
Exactly. This is an attractive asset to a grocery store that would be considering the village. You know, it's, they look at unit counts, like you said, the demographics of the area, how many people are in the area, what's the radius that they're willing to travel to go shop, and so, you know, the whole village concept with Woodside there, the village residents, the other neighborhoods around Beaver Creek, Gem Lakes, the other surrounding neighborhoods, I mean, this helps get those numbers up and would be attractive. It's hard to just go develop a grocery store and inn without, you know, having the demand there from a market perspective. I will say this, that, you know, we started the village in roughly 2008 when we physically got going on it, and not the greatest of times to start a development, but it has progressed and it finally has gotten its legs, and we feel good about things. We have added a lot of amenities and features in the village that were never on any concept plans, so, you know, we evolve and we grow and we adapt to the market, and we feel we've done that. We've added a park, a pond, we've added a bocce complex, a pavilion for outside residents. We encourage the broader community to use the village and its amenities and assets, and, you know, our goal is the same, you know, is to create a vibrant, diverse village neighborhood that not only these residents, but the broader community around can use it, enjoy the restaurants, businesses, shops, park amenities, so on so forth.
As far as reducing the number from 98 to 48, or whatever the number would be, I would imagine then, if you did that, you'd end up building another apartment complex with 50 units down the road to get to the number that was approved for it, and thus traffic going deeper into the subdivision and making it that much worse.
We like concentrating this. We're going to do this. Right now, these preliminary plans show this occurring in three different buildings, the first building being the largest. We would do this in phases. Obviously, there's, you know, some market analysis that we need to do, but we just feel like putting them all together is a more beneficial asset for the broader village community to put in.
And I assume you're going to sit down with the residents and communicate?
Absolutely. We feel that's important, and like I told Diane before the meeting, and we've expressed to many of the other residents, we will be reaching out to them to have a community meeting and, you know, just go over our plans, do a better job of communicating with them in the future, and hopefully not have...
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carolyn Tribble. I live at 280 Coach Lightway in the village, and I, of everybody here, I'm probably the most recent resident. We bought our lot in 2019, and Diana was showing you, we never got the updated plan. I even asked the salesperson, and all he said was, oh, there's going to be a hotel and a grocery store. There was never any mention, never any diagram of like what's current. So, and I don't think very many of the other homeowners saw the real thing either, so the general feeling in the village is that we were really blindsided and kind of betrayed, and that's led to a lack of trust, for whatever that's worth. And she also had a very good point, that there are several just raw vacant patches of land in the village, and maybe those could be finished before working on these apartments. And you said it would be 98 units plus or minus. The plus part makes me nervous. I think the minus would be much more preferable to everybody, because I think the density is a real concern.
Yes. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Bill Beatty, 206 Gate Post Lane. I just have a question about the word density, which was used at least a half a dozen, if not 10 or 12 times two weeks ago at this meeting, and a couple of times tonight. When the traffic study was conducted 15, 20 years ago, whatever it was, the number of residents, the concept plan at that time, which was tremendously flexible for the developer, pretty ambiguous for all of us residents, the number of changes and so forth, but I'm just wondering about getting an understanding of traffic study and density, when density, to me, all of these apartment units or villas or residents over retail, and again, we only have one retail shop, it's a bike shop, all the other buildings were built so that there would never be resident over retail, but density, to me, of 98 units is a dense situation versus, you know, all of the other residents throughout the community and it being dispersed. So I just wanted to understand what the traffic study really showed and why it said it was okay for this number of residences, and then all of a sudden 98 in one spot. If we could just get some clarity on that.
Sure. I think probably our planning director, Mr. Ryan Bland. Ryan, good evening.
Good evening. So when we looked at this, when we've evaluated this plan as staff over the number of years, the maximum square footage of retail, maximum square footage of office, maximum number of units and dwelling types has remained consistent since the 2005 plan, more or less. So different things kind of, you know, obviously, for instance, the assisted living facility grew, which actually reduces traffic count balance. I would say same thing with fewer retail shops in there and more offices, the traffic count balance, again, so it's likely actually coming in shallow from what it was originally anticipated to be. Now, when we look at density, we look at density over the balance of the 100 acres roughly, 80 to 100 acres encompassed by the village, and the primary thing we're looking at is major intersections. The major intersection here is Silver Bluff and Village Green. So, as you know, that was upgraded. There was some question about this particular development, so it would fall, this development by itself, a multifamily around roughly 100 units, reaches about 50 to 60 trips per peak hour, so somebody leaving is a trip, somebody coming in is a trip, so kind of, you know, it's not, back and forth is not a trip. Okay? So at that rate, you're, you know, at maximum peak capacity, you're releasing at about one car a minute at peak hour. The Silver Bluff intersection has two lanes that hold at least 15 cars' capacity apiece before it reaches that intersection, and a third left turn lane, which can get about six cars for the distance. So just kind of, we do take into account those sorts of things. Had it been something, I think, that would have clearly triggered increases in unit counts, increases in, say, retail square footage, things like that, to an increment where we think that may be worth additional study, but again, with the consistency that the number of residential units, the number of square footage of retail space, square footage of office space, has been consistent with what it has been, then we kind of know by that that the required improvements then are not going to significantly change. Now, one reason this did come through as a concept plan is because a lot of the units are being concentrated in a single area as opposed to dispersed in multiple areas on the site. We thought that felt, we felt as staff that that probably warranted a significant amendment that comes to council. So that's why it's come before you, and that's kind of the way we've evaluated traffic as different things come in, in the village.
But once again, Ryan, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ryan.
May I ask you?
Yes, ma'am.
You are saying that the traffic count has maintained or stayed about the same since the original concept plan, very close?
That's right.
And that when the traffic and the light was put at Silver Bluff, these apartments were taken into that formula in consideration when you did that?
That's correct. So the...
The build-out.
There's a couple of things, yeah. So on the village side, yes, those numbers and those, and even the eventual build-out of the south side of Woodside proper, Woodside plantation, were taken into account some percentage of those exiting this route. At the same time, as DOT planned for those improvements and held their public meetings and those sorts of things, they not only looked at that, but they looked at the counts on Silver Bluff and how they have grown over time as well to try to appropriately size the Silver Bluff-Village Green intersection. They've also, you know, it's one of those things that, the other thing we look at is spacing, and so that first driveway back is at least 300, 330 feet back of the stop bar where this would enter. That's one thing, another thing we will look at to make sure there's not going to be sufficient backing to start to block that. That's one of the concerns that we kind of look at with that as well, but again, since the balance of things haven't changed and the projected traffic out of that development as a whole hasn't changed, it didn't trigger a new traffic study.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
I have a question for Ryan before he takes this.
Ryan, don't go too far. Councilwoman Price?
Ryan, I'm just curious, based on the comments that we've heard this evening and at our previous meeting, were we in attendance, we being the city, to hear some of the firsthand concerns by the community regarding the concerns that were expressed tonight, and did we respond to those concerns?
Did anybody attend, like, any community meetings?
Yes.
We did not, no. Most of the, so due to our noticing requirements, I think most people received notice via the posted notice on the property, and that's the time we started fielding calls. We fielded a high volume of calls and talked through the scenario with different people. We did find out that a lot of people didn't necessarily know all the ins and outs of the village concept plan. Now, I'm not sure that's disproportionate to how well people know their own zoning citywide as a whole, but it is kind of akin to that, that, you know, it's, we realize as staff that, seeing this over and over and over again, we have a much more intuitive, you know, understanding of what it is than somebody who hasn't actually sat down and gone over all the details, all the notes on the concept plan, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Which is why, I can say, which is why things like this trigger a public hearing before a planning commission and council, to be able to kind of get those, that sort of information to folks as part of the public hearing process.
Okay. Any other questions for Ryan? Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? You've already spoken, haven't you, Ms. Hart? Anyone who hasn't spoken? No, ma'am. You've already spoken. Yes, ma'am.
Since he doesn't want to speak, could you take his...
No, but as chair, I can let Ms. Jeannie speak. Ms. Hart, Ms. Hart.
I just have one question, and I guess it's to Mr. Bland. Coming out Silver Bluff Road from Aiken, getting ready to turn left into the village, we have three stoplights. Two of them are green, and the one on the left is a caution. Well, when we have this additional traffic coming in, will the city of Aiken make that yellow caution a left turn lane? Because it's very difficult to see cars coming in the opposite direction until they're almost at the top of the hill when we are trying to turn left. And again, that's just a concern because of the number of traffic and vehicles that we're going to have there, so I would like to see that caution light become a left turn green or whatever. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, Ms. Hart. Thank you. And I think from staff perspective, I think we'd probably obviously watch that and study that. At dusk, that's a very difficult with the yield, because it's yield now. I enjoy walking on the path around there, so I make that turn coming in a couple of times a week, and as it's later it is, so I think that'd probably be a DOT.
It would be. We can talk to our traffic engineer, and she can coordinate with DOT similar to the Stratford.
We can look at that, Ms. Hart.
That probably is, that is a good idea.
Yeah. Any other comments? Any comments, questions from council?
I have a question regarding investment. What is the level of investment with this, the village market?
Sure. Would someone, Kent, I don't know if you could...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The level of, it's Councilwoman Price.
I'm sorry, I thought...
I have the same problem. I can't tell who makes a motion or a second.
Can't see our mouths, you can't tell.
What is the level of investment in the village in terms of the market, the build-out costs?
At this point, what have we invested? It's many, many, many millions of dollars.
Okay, but the total build-out, do you have any estimate?
Some of that'll be somewhat market dependent, but I would say when it's all of a sudden done, it'll be in excess of $20 million.
Twenty million?
Yes.
In excess of 20 million is what?
With all the buildings, infrastructure, the parks, the amenities, the residences.
Thank you so much.
All right. Before council's the second reading of an ordinance to amend the concept plan for the village at Woodside for the relocation of multifamily apartment, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Ms. Councilwoman Price, Councilwoman Gregory, the mayor, Councilwoman Diggs, Councilwoman Broll, and Councilman Gerdo. It's unanimous, thank you. And we want to thank everyone for coming out, too. There was a lot of discussion, and I hope communications will certainly be forthcoming with our residents also. Moving down the agenda to... Moving down the agenda to item number 300, old businesses, is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex four Parson Circle and zone it residential single-family RS-15 by title and ordinance to annex property located at four Parson Circle and adjoining lot and to zone the same residential single-family RS-15. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Gerdo. Is there a second?
I second.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do have this annexation before council. It's the, the address and the adjoining lot, which is combined approximately two and a half acres, zone both lots residential, single-family RS-15, which is consistent with the surrounding uses and zoning. The Planning Commission unanimously approved this at their September 15th meeting, and council, you passed this on first reading unanimously on September 28th, and it is before you for second reading this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Beanbo, is there any comments from the audience? Any comments or questions from council? Those in favor of second reading, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to item number four, this is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to transfer property at 625 Aldridge Street Northeast by title and ordinance approving the sale of one property in Crosland Park to Deborah Greer. Is there a motion?
I so moved.
Councilwoman Diggs made the motion. Councilwoman Price made the second. Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do have this proposal of the, Mr. Greer, or actually, I guess, Mr. Greer and his wife owned the lot directly. Between our lot and where the Burger King is on York Street, he has a proposal to construct up to six so-called tiny houses, which would be the single-family residential homes on these lots, which total equal about seven tenths of an acre, the two lots. We are proposing a transfer at no cost. We would have a clawback in the ultimate, as we do the legal paperwork, that if work doesn't begin within 24 months, that the property would revert back to us, our lot we're donating would revert back at no cost, and it is for some new housing construction on the north side of town. And you heard this at first reading, September 28th, and it's before you tonight for second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any, any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Hearing none, all those in favor of second reading, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Our great project, look forward to that. All right. Moving down, old business, to item number five, this is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance for the sale of lot in Aviation Business Park from Security Federal to WTC Airport LLC by title and ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to waive its right of first refusal in the property owned by Security Federal Bank and located in Aviation Business Park. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right. Councilwoman Gregory, Councilwoman Price, second. Comments from staff?
Yes, this business, Aviation Business Park is, this particular lot is in that park. The city sold this to Security Federal Bank in 2005. At the time, they thought they were going to construct their new, a new bank processing center there because they were expanding their operations in the Columbia area and in the, into the Augusta area. Ultimately, they chose to not construct anything there. The property has been on for sale for over a year, and WTC Airport LLC has a contract there in the middle of due diligence. They would propose putting, doing some commercial, potential commercial use for this lot. Since it is one of, in the covenants and restrictions for Aviation Business Park, anytime property is sold with, from one entity to another, the city retains the right of first refusal to purchase it back, and we are recommending that we not exercise our right of first refusal to allow this transaction between Security Federal and WTC Airport LLC to occur, and this must be passed via an ordinance of city council. You heard this, council did it at September 28th meeting, and it is before you tonight for second reading.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Are there any comments from the audience? Any comments or questions from council? Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Broll?
Mr. Beanbo, this conveys and with the restrictive covenants, except for the one in section one, part B, where it says we, the city has the right to repurchase within two years if no building is up. We've, we've struck that particular covenant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Good clarification. Any other questions? All those in favor of second reading, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to item number 600, old businesses, this is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending the 2020-2021 budget and approving the emergency repairs at the Woodside sewer lift station by title and ordinance amending the budget of the city of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021 for emergency sewer repair at Woodside Sewer Lift Station. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Gerdo. Comments from staff?
Thank you. As we were doing our oxygen injection system project in this area, we discovered there was some other work that needed to be done at the Woodside Sewer Lift Station, and since it was over the $25,000 threshold, it does require a council budget amendment to the fiscal year 2021 budget. And it is, you approve this at first reading on September 28th. This is before you for second reading tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Any comments, questions from council? Hearing none, all those in favor of second reading, raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you.
I was premature.
So, we have no new business?
No new business tonight.
Wow.
It looked like an error.
Making up for it with petitions and.